Good evening and welcome to the Town of Wakefield Town Council meeting for February 22nd, 2021. I'd like to call this meeting to order. For attendance, I see we have all councilors except for Paul Danaco, who will be attending shortly. If we can do the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And just, I checked with Sherri and no one had signed up for public engagement prior to the meeting. Is anyone who has joined on Zoom want to participate in public engagement? Okay, one woman does, Sue Hers. The, you have up to three minutes to state your, what you want to talk about. We will likely not engage with you, but we'll certainly listen to you. So whenever you'd like to start.
Okay, well, thank you very much. My name is Sue Hers. First of all, I thank you all for the work you're doing. This is my first town meeting and I've lived here for decades. Came on me. And my, I wanted to say something about what I just read moments ago in the item that there's going to be a non-binding discussion about an advisory, I guess, about whether or not to vote on the mascot. Can I say something about that?
Of course, yes, please.
Great, great. So my, I have given a lot of thought to the mascot, but as far as voting on it, it strikes me as the role of policymakers, not votes. I think if we voted before the Americans with Disabilities Act, should people with disabilities have an equally effective opportunity to go into any place of public accommodation? We would have said, that's ridiculous, no way, you know? That would not have happened if we said, gee, you know, should gay people and Jews be protected from protected speech? It's like, oh, come on, that's an individual decision, it's not a big deal, let it go, and so on and so on. So in this particular case, it looks like there are a group of people identifying as Native Americans who feel personally affronted by the mascot. Now, whether or not that ends up being persuasive, I don't know, but the fact that that's where it stands, that the claim is that this can be harmful to a large group of people, to me says, that's why we elect policymakers and we defer to their judgment and that's what they're there for. That includes you guys, I guess, you know? I don't know who makes the ultimate decisions on this, but that's my thought, that this is not appropriate for a vote.
Thank you very much, Sue. And I forgot to ask you if you could identify, give your address.
Oh, 82 Main Street.
Excellent. Thank you for those thoughts and I think we'll take this, the vote that you're talking about later on. But you've almost got it right. We're not the policymakers on this. But, so we certainly do have a vote though with regard to whether or not it hits the ballot. So thank you for your thoughts, very much.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna go have my dinner. I love you, I love what you're doing, I appreciate this. I am not gonna continue sitting because I hadn't planned for it.
Absolutely. No, enjoy your dinner. Thank you for participating.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, moving on to item number five, the COVID-19 update. Are we going from Steve to Ruth? How are we doing this?
I'll start very quickly. As the council is aware, town has done a much, much better job or a great job. It's very, very difficult. We moved back into the yellow category last week with our positivity rates, lower with our incidence of new COVID cases lower. And I want to thank the, the public. I know it's hard, I know everyone's tired with this, but we do need to make sure that we wear a mask, that we watch our distance, that we wash our hands, that we really try to stay safe, not have big groups and what have you. And I think that that, people are listening to that, which is, which is really wonderful. One thing that we've talked about is that as more people get vaccinated, just because you've received both your shots and Wahoo, that's great, that doesn't mean that all bets are off, doesn't mean that you can just, you know, do whatever you want anymore because there is still a big general population out there. So we will be looking at targeting that messaging a little bit more so people don't think just because, hey, they've got one or two shots, that life is gonna change like that. It's not, we gotta still have to make sure that we're vigilant and, and maintain that. I would be remiss if I didn't talk about the milestone that the country hit today. 500,000 people across the country have died of COVID-19. More people that have died in multiple wars put together, so it is quite a sobering moment. But, you know, we have tried to fight back. We had another long day today, but over 850 people did get vaccinated today at our site in, at 200 Corner Power Parkway and great job done by All Around. And a lot of people have worked, I want to say 24/7 for an awful long time and they really have done a great job. So I'll turn it over to Ruth, who's been working 24/7 for a very long time as well. And thank you, Ruth.
Thank you, Steve. Yeah, we did have a second shot vaccination clinic today where 871 people were vaccinated. We have our final first shot vaccination clinic this Friday for people over 75 and their caretakers, their givers. So as well as the second shots for people that weren't able to be vaccinated today. And after that, we have, we will do the second shots for the people who get their first shots on Friday. And then we won't be doing any more local clinics based on the governor's strategy of moving towards regional mass vaccination sites. So really grateful to the company who owns Converse Building. Steve, what's their name?
Waterstone.
I was water something, yes, Waterstone. It has been really a fabulous site and just ideal and they've been a pleasure to work with. Rick Stinson has done a fantastic job recruiting and organizing volunteers. Sometimes we've had up to 100 volunteers a day at the site. So all in all, everybody's been pitched in and it's worked. It's been a really positive experience. So as far as our numbers go, they, they are coming down steadily. I know that our Communications Director, Jen McDonald, has been putting updates on the town website that shows a very nice looking downward line, which is continuing. So we're in good shape, we're continuing to go down, but that is because of everybody's vigilance, which as Steve said, we can't, we can't let that up. We are still doing case management and contact tracing. We're able to do most of them in-house and not have to send too many cases to the state's community tracing program, which is, is awesome. And we continue to field calls and answer people's questions.
Thanks so much, Ruth. Do any members of the Town Council have any questions for Ruth or Steve on this item? No, Jonathan.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you Ruth and Steve. Just a quick question, you know, certainly with the governor's kind of change of policy in terms of not distributing vaccine to, you know, local boards of health and other agencies, that obviously changes our situation going forward. Do we, are we confident of sort of the doses that we need to run the first shot vaccine clinic on Friday and the second shot? Has there been any kind of retrenchment in terms of the number of appointments that we've been able to offer or any changes relative to what you guys have been planning?
Well, I'll start with, Ruth can jump in. Today, you know, we were shorted 600 plus doses and we knew that ahead of time. I mean, so we did, we were able to let people know that has been shipped to us, we say, for the next one. So we're confident that Friday, we should be okay. And then I think we'll be confident after that, but Ruth can jump in. But that's been a challenge, Jonathan, absolutely.
So we did, I did receive a shipping notice today, so I can track the shipment. And we will get our second doses. And I, I was remiss in mentioning Homebound and the Housing Authority. We were notified today of a new program the state is doing. They had already sent a survey to the housing authorities asking how many people they had in their buildings, which our housing authority sent back. And I was notified today that I'll be receiving 200 doses next week for the housing authority that we need to use within 10 days. So once we receive it, we'll coordinate with the housing authority to set up clinics at their buildings.
That's great to hear, thank you. Just out of curiosity, how many, my recollection was we were looking at 750 first doses on Friday. Is that still, still the plan?
No, 265, I think is our latest count.
Okay, okay. So we definitely, definitely less than what we had wanted when you guys started planning.
Exactly.
We administer the vaccine we're given.
No, absolutely. And I think you're doing a great job of administering the ones we were given. I wish we had more to give on Friday, but again, doesn't take away from, you know, really the stellar work, Ruth, that you and your team and Steve, everyone at Town Hall's been doing on this. So thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. Maureen.
I just, just want to echo a little bit. Steve and Ruth, you guys are having the Friday COVID-19 update calls for people of the public. I encourage anyone that wants to learn more, although I don't think it'll happen this Friday.
We could do it from onsite, maybe.
No, but I want to just echo what Jonathan said, you guys are doing an amazing job. I have gotten nothing but positive reviews from people who have been able to get their shots locally. It's just such a, you know, a blessing not to have to go far, drive to, drive to Gillette or figure out which gate to use at Fenway, as Ann and I were talking about on Friday. So I just wanted to say, thank you so much. I'm disappointed that we're not getting more doses. It has nothing to do with you and hopefully the state will kind of figure out what's going on before we get to the general public. But thank you Ruth and Tom and Rick and Steve and every, all the volunteers for all that you're doing.
Thank you.
All right, looks like no further questions. Thank you, Ruth, you're a rock star and your team are rock stars. We're so blessed to have you, so thank you. I know you must be exhausted, so you can scoot right off this meeting if you'd like to.
We'll have our budget.
Oh, a budget! Why do we need to give the Board of Health a budget? Come on, what have you been doing? Okay, so it looks like no more council, councillor questions for Ruth. So we'll move to item number six, approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion and a second to approve the February 8th Town Council minutes? Moved by Julie?
Seconded.
Seconded by Jonathan. Roll call, vote. Maureen?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Julie?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Ed?
Aye.
And Maureen? Yes.
You mean Paul, you already, you started with me.
No, Paul's not here.
Thank you.
Oh, you are, I saw, you snuck on, okay, Paul.
Yes.
Oh, you shifted because someone jumped on, so all the faces, you guys can't do that to me. So.
I think you have to call.
And Peter.
Yes.
Got it, awesome, Peter. Thank you, that's a unanimous vote for the approval of the town minutes. Now we'll go to our budget, item number seven. This is our third round and our first budget is the Fire Department. So we'll start, Kevin will start with you and then go to Chief Sullivan or just jump to Chief Sullivan?
I'll do a quick overview, then I'll jump to Doug Butler. Doug is on the Finance Subcommittee for the Fire Department. We'll get his comments and then we'll turn it over to Mike.
Sounds good.
The budget number 17 is the Fire Department budget. We're recommending that this budget be increased 215,882 dollars over fiscal 2021. This increase is all in personal services and is for contractual and negotiated increases. I will point out, in personal services, there is four new firefighter positions. These firefighter positions will be funded 100% by our SAFER grant. The expense portion of the budget is level funded. The total budget request for fiscal 2022 is $6,57,188. With that, I can turn it over to Mr. Butler.
Perfect. Sure, go ahead, Doug.
Yep, so again, myself and the other members of the Fire Department Subcommittee sat down with the chief two and a half weeks ago, maybe three weeks ago now, and went over, you know, what we saw in terms of the budget. And again, it was level funded everywhere with the exception of personal services. The other, you know, the areas of concern we had, again, I think everybody, your grouping hours always like, you know, overtime remained an issue, especially for this year, but much more explainable due to COVID. We think that the additional SAFER firefighters will have a material impact on overtime, maybe not in fiscal 22, but certainly in the years going forward. And then the only other thing we'd say is to make sure that as you're thinking about, the forecasting group with, with Dan Sherman is thinking about that these additional firefighters will create a necessary increase in the budget over the next four years. So you're gonna see, where it's level funded this year, there's, you know, when the SAFER grant stops paying for it, I think that's after three years, right, Steve? You're gonna see an increase just because that's the cost of having four more firefighters.
Thank you, Doug. Chief Sullivan, do you want to say something?
Can you hear me?
Yep, now you're good.
I'm getting better at that, Steve.
You are, you're doing good.
Just wanted to take a second and say that, you know, I basically prepared a budget that I was asked to prepare. It's level funded. I understand why we were requested for a level funded budget, if necessary. I think it's, it's a good budget, I think we can live with it. Very excited to have the SAFER grant and get the four new firefighters on board. I would definitely be remiss if I didn't take a second and tell you how extremely proud I am of every member of the Fire Department for all their efforts during the COVID pandemic this last year and continuing as we speak. We responded to a total this afternoon, almost 900 calls involving either confirmed, suspected or unknown cases involving COVID. And the department responded to all those calls or any complaints in the beginning without adequate PPE. And the dedication that they've exhibited is something that I, I'll never forget. Definitely, long after I retire, I'll never forget this time period. So I just want to take a second and just extend my appreciation to all the members of the department. When you pick up the phone and you dial 911 and it's because your friend or family member is sick from COVID, two agencies show up at your door all the time, the Fire Department and the Talo Ambulance. And they're not represented here tonight, but I will tell you that the Talo Ambulance has been a partner in our efforts to fight COVID and treat people with COVID. And I'm also extremely proud of all of their efforts. So if anyone has any questions about the budget, I would be happy to answer.
Great, thank you so much, Mike. I'll just echo, echo what you said, that we are so proud of the men and women of the Fire Department. Right when COVID started, I think we were a town that pivoted quicker than most around us and your firefighters did not shirk away from that duty. I see we have Deputy Chief Purcell also on the line. And I, I'd say the same thing about Katalo. I've heard nothing but good things about Katalo, so I think they are a wonderful partner. And, you know, not just simply COVID, but the Fire Department, firefighters respond to a lot of matters that police respond to. And recently, we've had some really upsetting scenes that your firefighters responded to and I am sure that that was as devastating to them as it was to some of the officers. So I want to say the professionalism that you show, that your team shows, is just something we are so proud of. And I thank you for reaching out to them, to thank your firefighters. So we, I, I will speak for the whole Town Council, but I am certainly proud of you. I see some hands raised, I'll just go down the list of participants. Ed?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening, Chief. Thank you for this. As a Finance Committee alum, two words I love to hear are level funded, so I appreciate your being able to do that. Question, question for you on these, these four new members that we're adding to the department. How are you forecasting out the impact that their hirings will have on overtime going forward, looking over the next few years?
Well, we, we have to get them trained first. We just extended five conditional office of employment. We have to get them through the Fire Academy. We do have tentative slots for them at the Fire Academy in July. Once they get in there, they'll be there for 10 weeks, they'll come out and hopefully start to count on their shifts probably in the late, by the late fall. And at that point, I would see, well, we will have an extra cushion of one firefighter per group. Also, from the standpoint of the Fire Chief, we'll also have three, a three man crew in the ladder truck, which is something we've been pushing for, for a long time. So it should decrease the potential or, it's gonna help with overtime, okay? We need to be careful when we say that though, because every time I say that, I have, something happens and I have a hard time maintaining my four groups of 12 and at that point, it would be 13 met. So it could improve, it could and should improve the overtime situation.
And just like I said, follow up to that too, just looking out at what our development is looking like and the projects that are, that are underway and expected going forward. There, we have obviously density and also height with a lot of these new, new buildings. How would that, you know, transition the needs of the department? And, and I guess the broader question for this council is, you know, perhaps we should be thinking about strategies and making sure that we're accounting for that, you know, as a part of that, I'll call it, what are the development costs, if you will, because that is a cost that stays with us, you know, well after the developer has left town.
Well, we're definitely noticing an increase in the request for services. We didn't quite make it this year, but last year was the first year we hit 4,000 calls. I honestly think we would have hit 4,000 calls this year. During the first surge, we did experience a phenomenon where people just literally were, did not want to go to the hospital. And we lost probably 300 or 400 medical aid calls there and that's where I'm thinking is, would have made up, but made it to 4,000. So our requests for services are going up. The ladder truck is going out of the, out on responses more and more often. It was going out with a two man, two firefighter crew, a lieutenant and one firefighter. And this extra help that we're getting from the SAFER grant will boost that staffing to three, which becomes extremely important. Wait, as you pointed out, Wakefield's building these very, very large apartment buildings, multi-story and, you know, you might, even though they're well protected, you can't predict that something's never gonna happen in one of those buildings. If and when it does happen, the demand that's gonna be placed on that ladder crew is gonna be tremendous. So yes, the department needs to start thinking about looking forward and, and possibly growing with the town. The town's growing and the Fire Department's may have to grow with it.
Thank you, Chief.
Can I jump in and just a second?
Of course.
Ed brings up a great point and we actually, when the Finance Committee looked at the police budget, they talked about that affecting the police too, greater density, more, you know, larger apartment buildings. If we look at Foundry Street, it's gonna explode. I think Chief Scory said what, there were, did he say 1,200, 1,200 new units in Wakefield, potentially on the board when everything was done? So police and fire, we will be forecasting forward on that. So those, that's on the Finance Committee's radar as Doug Butler mentioned. And I know you, Finance Committee alums certainly, certainly know that, know that drill. So certainly something that we are looking at and figuring that out as we go along. So you will be hearing more over that over the next few years.
Thanks, Steve. Jonathan and Julie. You, Jonathan?
Sorry, I think I unmuted and muted myself in quick succession. So as another Finance Committee alum, I'm also gonna ask over time if you'll bear with me for a second, Chief. In terms of the numbers so far for fiscal 2021, so my assumption is the overtime was higher because we had different, you know, different firefighters under quarantine at different times because of suspected exposure and things like that?
That definitely played a part in it. During both surges, including this second surge, which is finally starting to wind down, we actually increased the staffing on ladder one from two to three.
Okay.
That obviously makes a significant impact on overtime. But you're also correct in pointing out that when a department member did get sick, that often involved a process where they were, not only were they quarantined, but the firefighters that had contact with them had to be quarantined until they were ruled out as having COVID. So COVID definitely played a very significant role in overtime this year.
So in light of that, and this is probably more a question, Mr. Mayo, for you. Are some of those costs recoverable through CARES Act funding? I mean, given, given it seems like you can draw a straight line from the pandemic to some of the extra costs we've been heard there.
The answer is yes, and a lot of that has come in. Kevin just hasn't moved that over yet. So I think we're feeling pretty good about that budget because of that, right, Kevin?
That's correct. Through, through half the year, through the end of December, the amount that is reimbursable through either the CARES Act or FEMA is about a little over $210,000. So it is a considerable amount of money, it just hasn't been transferred back into the fire department yet.
Okay, great, thank you, that's helpful to know and, and good news. Just one other quick question I did want to ask, in the personal services budget, the EMT line seemed to increase fairly significantly. I was wondering, Chief or Kevin, if you could talk through that, just to understand what's, what's going on there?
Are you talking about the EMT stipend, the emergency medical stipend? Is that what you mean, the larger? We also have a EMS coordinator.
Yeah, I think, I believe this is the stipend. It's, it's budgeted at 318,000 and change for 22?
Yeah, there's a couple of reasons for that. We have a few more EMTs than we did last year. We had a couple of, we've been hiring new firefighters pretty steadily and as they come onboard, their stipend increases accordingly. And the second and probably the more significant of the two is the fact that we just negotiated a contract and across the board, they got a raise, so to speak, in their stipend. And that's pretty significant.
Great, thank you very much, appreciate that. And thank you again for the good work that you and your department have done. I, you know, we, we talk about how this has been such a challenging year for everyone and the Fire Department is, is no exception, given that you've been on the forefront of, of, you know, certainly the medical responses that we've had. So thank you for everything that you've done and again, for your team. And again, for your team for really great work and all their bravery over the last year.
Thanks, Jonathan.
Thanks, Jonathan. Julie?
Thank you. Jonathan, that's a great word bravery, because it's definitely what you have been doing.
Julie froze. That's all right. We can, when Julie unfreezes or chats potentially, I can relate the question she has. Any further questions for Chief Sullivan? No? Excellent. Chief, do you mind hanging around for just a couple of moments just to answer Julie's question when she comes back on?
Sure.
Thank you so much, Mike. All right. So we need a motion and a second for the fire department budget. The budget at $6,57,188. Is that correct, Kevin?
$6,57,188, correct.
Excellent. If I could have a motion in a second, please?
Move.
Moved by Ed?
Second.
Seconded by Maureen. Roll call vote. We don't have Julie. Ed?
Hi.
John, Jonathan?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
And Peter?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Julie got zoomed right out with internet issues. So that's a unanimous vote of six to nothing. Thank you. Kevin, moving on to budget number 22, the animal inspector?
If you want, Madam Chair, you could move to Ruth because I'll then she can get off.
No, absolutely. Let's go to item number D, budget 26, the health department.
Okay, for the health department, we are requesting an increase of $7,983 over fiscal 21. This increase breaks down, there was an increase in personal services of $6,045, which is a contractual and negotiated increase. This also includes a position upgrade. So that's why that increase in personal services looks a little bit larger than the other departments that we've seen so far. Under contractual services, the increase is $1,569. We, we increased the public health nurses' hours from 11 hours to 17 and a half. We share the public health nurse with Melrose. And we're looking to make that a full-time position that would then be split between Wakefield and Melrose. The, a portion of that increase for the public health nurse, we will be requesting a reimbursement from the CARES Act. So half the cost of the increase, about $7,000, will be getting reimbursed in fiscal 22. We also have a small increase in mosquito control line item of $369. The total tax levy request for fiscal 2022 is $277,023. And with that, we have Ruth on the line. If there's any specific questions for Ruth.
Anne, you're muted.
Thank you so much for letting me know. It'll happen three more times, people. Do you have any, want to make any statements about the budget?
I'm sure. So the budget is, as Kevin said, is essentially a level funded budget with the exception of some hours, some additional hours for the public health nurse, which I don't think I need to explain that. The last year or this past fiscal year has been, the work of the department has been almost exclusively COVID-19 related, with the exception of the licensing function and responding to complaints and food inspections. So the entire department, whether they're grant-funded substance abuse prevention or mass emotion, everybody has been doing COVID-19 work, which has been fantastic. Everybody's doing contact tracing. The state has been very generous with their grants, allowing flexibility to allow people to work on the COVID-19 issues. And it's been a fantastic team working really well together. And that's about it. You probably know more about what we do every week than anybody because of the updates all year.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Ruth. I can't even articulate how hard you and your group are working. And Maureen's right, if folks want to listen and be on top of what's happening with COVID-19, Friday, 10:30, we run a Zoom every Friday, not this Friday because there'll be a clinic, but after that. Do any members of the council wish to have any questions for Ruth? Questions, comments? All right. I don't see any. I think everyone knows that you need to, to rest because you're working around the clock. Well done, council, not asking this question. All right. So if I could have a motion and a second to approve the health department budget of $277,023.
So moved.
Moved by Jonathan?
Second.
Seconded by Maureen. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Roll call vote. Myself, yes. Julie?
Yes.
Ed?
Hi.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Did you vote? Okay.
Yes.
And Peter?
Yes.
Excellent. Unanimous approval of the budget. Ruth, thank you so much. We have Julie back. So Julie, I asked Chief Sullivan to hang in there for a moment to, to answer your question.
Thank you so much. I'm sorry. And thanks for sticking around, Chief. Um, my question was about process on hiring the four people. I know that the hiring process is very strict and statutory. But given that we have a grant or just what you're seeing in the pool, are you seeing any ability to hire kind of more diverse workforce or multilingual work, workforces? What are you seeing kind of out there for hiring?
Well, unfortunately, in this state, we, a civil service fire department, I kind of handed the list of folks to interview and pick from. And that's kind of, you know, what I'm hiring from. Having said that, we, I like to think that we're not as undiversified as some other fire departments. We have a Latin American firefighter, you know, two women firefighters. And out of a complement of presently, right now at 52, that's, that's not too bad.
That's good. Do you find that you're needing more kind of translation or multilingual services in the field? How is that being handled? I never see anything in the budget around that.
Um, usually it is becoming a more of an issue, to answer your question. We've been very fortunate in that we've been able to deal with situations that arise, usually because there's a coworker or a relative or quite often a younger child or so forth that can get us by enough to get the job done. But yes, it is an issue. We actually just hired our first violent wolf firefighter.
Excellent.
Within the last year or so.
That's great. Thank you so much. You're doing a great job.
Thanks, Julie. We voted on the budget.
I, I.
Even though I knew you would have voted for it, yes. Chief Sullivan, thank you so much. Thanks for hanging in there.
Thanks.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, committee. Thank you, Doug.
Thanks, Doug. So item B under item seven, budget 22, which is the animal, animal inspector. Steve, does that go to you?
That, that will, but I'm going to ask you to go to general insurance and, and so John Spinello can get out of here.
Oh, sure. I'm sorry. I, yeah, we can take these and whoever's here, so we can.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Boot you out. No problem. So budget 39, general insurance.
Okay, I'll go over the, John Spinello is here tonight. I'm sure everyone knows John. John, John's going to handle the next two budgets, the general insurance budget and the workers comp budget. I will give a quick overview of the general insurance and turn it over to John. Then I'll do the same for workers comp.
Perfect.
For general insurance, we're recommended that this budget be increased $23,200 over the current year. This increase breaks down to $20,500 to the tax levy portion of the budget. An increase of $1,100 to the water division. An increase of $600 to the sewer division. This budget covers the town buildings, motor vehicles, professional liability and cyber, cybersecurity. The total budget request for fiscal 2022 is $460,425, with $423,025 coming from tax levy, $23,800, $800 coming from the water enterprise and $13,600 coming from the sewer enterprise. With that, I will turn it over to John for any specific questions.
Sure. John, do you have any comments you want to make before anyone might have questions?
Yeah, I'll just throw out a few things. The first thing I'd like to say is I don't have the same two words that Ed likes for this budget, but I have better words for the next budget. So well, in general insurance, it's, it's more of just a guess at this point, this time of year, because the renewals are in July 1st. So, you know, they're only six months through the year and they really don't want to give you any firm numbers. In the fall, I was kind of worried things were in, in the industry itself where we're seeing, you know, double-digit increases. But we've seen a lot of flat renewals and larger accounts. And it's a situation where we like them and they like us. And I get along well with the underwriters. So usually in April, you know, she'll send out questions and applications, which I'll fill in, send them back. And I sit with Kevin and, and Steve every single May. We go through the numbers, we catch up on workers comp too. And then, you know, we try to fit it to the budget. Last year, we actually dropped the coverage I thought we could afford to retain. And we picked up cyber liability and data compromise, which I thought we really needed. You know, we picked up a few dollars in, in premium savings. And we got with pretty much within budget, within a couple of thousand dollars. So that's not too bad when you forecast it in January for something in July. It isn't like workers comp where I have exact numbers. This is more just, you know, throwing dots at this point. But we always seem to get in that little small window and we seem to work it out. So I'm pretty confident where, where the budget request is that we'll fall in that number. Any specific on coverages, that's fine. You can ask that too or anything because everything was sent out.
Does anyone have any, any members of the council have any specific questions for John on general insurance? I'm Jonathan.
Thank you. Sorry, this actually maybe is more of a question for, for Kevin than John. But I, I just, the memo that we got refers to a four and a half percent increase in, in the, in the rate or in the spend for, for 2022. But it looks like it's, it's 5.1 in the, in the spreadsheet. I just wanted to make sure I was sort of tracking the, the numbers correctly.
That was my fault.
No, that was correct. That, that's four and a half percent over actual expenditures for this year. Where our actual expenditures this year are going to be a little bit higher than budgeted. We're going to need a reserve fund transfer at the end of the year. So that, that's where that four and a half percent came in. But you're, you're correct on the, what was actually budgeted from one year to the next, it is a little bit higher.
That was my fault. Yeah, that was my fault.
No, actually, it was, I understand the explanation there. So no, thanks for clarifying that. I mean, it's sort of an apples to oranges comparison between the memo and the sheet, but that, that's perfect. Thank you.
Thanks, Jonathan. Any other questions? We can go, before taking the vote, we can go to workers comp and take both votes at, you know, together.
Okay, I, I will quickly go over then turn it over to John. The workers comp budget, we're recommended that this budget be decreased $65,079 over the current year. This increase breaks down, under the tax levy portion, there's a decrease of $56,883. Under the water division, the decrease is $2,656. Under the sewer division, the decrease is $1,734. Under the MLD, the decrease is $3,806. The total budget request for fiscal 2022 is $472,540, with $420,990 coming from tax levy, $11,124 coming from the water enterprise, $6,202 coming from the sewer enterprise and $34,224 coming from the gas and light department. And with that, I will let John give us all the good news.
Great.
Well, I gotta be careful because I could talk about workers comp all night and Steve won't like that. Steve won't like that very much. Well, you can see that experience modification does really matter to us because, you know, last year we were at a 1.21 combined or we're at a 1.0, you know, 1.04. Last year, we only had about, we had $80,000, a little less than $80,000 on losses. And workers comp, we have two types of losses, on premises and off premises. Well, if you remember in December 19, we had our first and really only snowstorm of the year. So from that point on, it was just beautiful weather. So when you reduce slip and falls on, on premises, that's huge for us. So December, January, February, March was just fantastic. You know, we still had crews out working, the light department and all that. So the management did, did a very good job. But most of the, the reduction in losses was for premises. And then, of course, in, in March, we eliminated all on-premises exposure when we had the lockdown or shutdown, if you will. So in, in keeping that going, at this time last year, we had $44,000 in losses. And this year, we have 46. I don't like the idea we've had some snow in, in the last couple of weeks. But, you know, if we can get four more months of good experience here, I don't even care if that 44 doubles or triples, we could be looking on the credit side next year, looking forward. And so our payroll, it keeps expanding. But if our experience mod goes down, our experience mods go down, this budget will continue to go down, which makes me thrilled because it's been a long time since I've been sitting here saying, you know, something good. Giving good news about this budget, so.
Thank you, John. Do any members of the council have questions for John on workers comp? No. All right, seeing none. We'll take the first, first vote for general insurance. So I need a motion and a second to approve the general insurance budget of $460,425. Any further discussion? No. Okay. Myself, yes. Julie?
Sorry, Madam Chair, did you need the motion?
Oh, yeah, that would be helpful. I just was plowing right ahead. I'm Jonathan, motion, second.
I, yep, move to accept the budget as proposed for general insurance.
Excellent. Maureen, second. I'm, I'm looking ahead to our other budgets. So roll call vote. Myself, yes. Julie?
Yes.
Ed?
Hi.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
And Peter?
Yes.
Excellent. We need a motion and a second to approve the workers comp budget for $472,540.
So moved.
Moved by Ed, seconded by Paul. Roll call vote. Myself, yes. Julie?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
And Peter?
Yes.
Excellent. Both budgets passed unanimously. And thank you, John, so much for coming.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
John is a great partner. Over the years, we've worked very closely together, he, Kevin and I. And I know that he is absolutely thrilled with this worker comp budget.
I really am. Next year, good news too, let's hope.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good night.
Steve, do you have a preference between Medicare or parking?
We can go back to the animal inspector if you wish.
Or animal inspector, sounds good. Kevin, speaking to the animal inspector, please?
Yes, the animal inspector's budget, we are recommending that this budget be decreased $24,811 over the current fiscal year. This increase breaks down, under personal services, a decrease of $75,886. And this is due to a retirement. We're looking at an increase in contractual services of $34,550. We're looking to contract out the services of the animal control officer. We're looking to decrease the materials and supplies, $3,475 for the same reason where we're going to be contracting out those services, where we're able to decrease some of those line items and the materials and supplies. The total budget request for fiscal 2022 is $40,600.
Great. So if I can, if I can jump in now, Madam Chair.
Of course.
So we have a retirement here, Ken Stache, our long, longtime town employee. We have a retirement here, Ken Stache, our long, longtime town employee. Who, um, basically did anything that we, that we, or I asked him to do, um, was always available to do whatever. And he was our animal control officer for a very long time. Um, but he is retired now and, um, when Ken is on vacation or weekends, we do have coverage. And this is a certified animal control officer. So for the rest of this fiscal year, uh, we will utilize our, her services, um, as we would if Kenny were out on an injury. Or what have you. We pay her by call. So there's a savings there and that's in the budget already. Um, and I have been speaking with, um, one of our neighbors, um, and I am determined to, um. Create a partnership on this, uh, with one of our communities, uh, close to community. And, um, we will both see, both communities will see a savings. I think this is an area that really is ripe for, um, uh, collaboration. Uh, between the two communities. So when we do do that, um, there will be a memorandum of agreement that will come forward to the town council. Because you're the body that needs to authorize that. And, um, I look forward to bringing that to you. However, if while we're putting that, that, uh, uh, together, we still need to provide services. So I would continue doing that with the, um, person who handles our part-time now, Beverly Millard. And she does this for a lot of communities. She's a contract person for, uh, Middleton, Danvers. So, uh, where we, we know her, she does good work. So we would be paying her, uh, per call. Um, and where we're handling other items are, um, the phone calls are going and the emails are going to the police department. Um, for this and then they will follow up from there. So, um, I, I think it's a good way for us to, uh, handle this and, um, to actually save some money, which I know makes you guys happy. So, uh, I'm confident that's going to be pretty good. So I'm open for any questions.
Thank you, Steve. Any council members have questions? All right. Um, seeing none, I need a motion and a second to approve the animal inspector budget for forty thousand, six hundred dollars. Moved by Ed, seconded by Julie. Um, roll call, vote, myself, yes. Um, Julie?
Yes.
Ed?
Hi.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
And Peter?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you. Unanimous approval of the animal inspector budget. Budget number twenty-four, parking.
Next budget is the parking clerk budget. We are recommending that this budget be increased three thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars over the current fiscal year. Kenny State, the former animal control officer, we, we are looking to bring on as a part-time employee in the parking clerk's office. Uh, Kenny has been helping out there. Be- before he retired, i- i- in, in addition to his animal control duties. Uh, we will be looking to have him, uh, come in three days a week, two hours a day, uh, twenty-five dollars an hour. So that increase would be a seventy-eight hundred dollar increase, uh, under personal services. We weren't able to decrease contractual services, four thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars. The cost to print, uh, parking tickets. And the handheld devices are now falling under the police department budget. Also, under the professional services line item, that is now also in the police, uh, department budget. I, I do want to mention that this department does collect approximately seventy to eighty thousand dollars a year in parking violations. In motor, uh, tickets collected at the registry of motor vehicles. The total request for fiscal two thousand twenty-two is twelve thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars.
Thanks, Kevin. Um, any, um, questions? Jonathan?
Thank you. So ju- just want to help myself, help sort of clarify a couple of things. So the decrease that we're seeing on the contractual services, it sounds like that's not really a decrease. But that's effectively a cost shift over to the police department. Is that right?
That's correct.
So then in terms of the increase for Ken coming on as a part-time employee, is that a purely new cost? Or is that, um, ha- is that, is that offset somewhere else? I mean, um, how were we budgeting for sort of parking clerk services beforehand?
Basically, he was given extra duties along with his animal control officer.
Okay, so we, we were, he was effectively doing it as part of his salary in the animal control.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, got it. Thank you. That helps clarify things.
Thanks, Jonathan. Any other questions? Maureen?
Can I, can I just ask Stephen, uh, or, or Kevin, the seventy to eighty thousand dollars a year? That, I mean, in COVID, we haven't been giving as many parking tickets, I'm assuming, right? So that, that number is pre-COVID, I'm assuming?
That, that is pre-COVID. La- last year, we, we brought in just under a hundred thousand dollars between parking violations and the registry. This year, I, I'd be happy if we hit half that. I, I'd be happy with fifty thousand dollars due to COVID and. Just, just the situation that we're in right now. Ho- hopefully we'll be bouncing back next year. But we, we've taken a, a pretty big hit so far this year.
Yeah, and, and, you know, I think, I think for some of us, I mean, I, I did, the money is great. But a, a lot of us were hoping that it would change behavior. And so I'm just wondering, you know, is it a year from now where we kind of get some? Like where we would see that people aren't overstaying their, um, spaces? Like, uh, eventually the goal was we wouldn't be ticketing as much, right, Steve? And I, I.
Hope, we hope we would change.
Looking at you also. So like, I mean, the goal, I mean, I, I, I feel like when we debated this, we, we talked about. You know, we would change behavior and, and somehow looking at that. Now COVID's messed it up because people aren't parking downtown. Unfortunately, they're not going to the businesses. They're not taking the commuter rail in. But I would love for next year, when we have this discussion, to kind of talk about, you know. I don't want that number to keep on staying that high because I want us to shift behavior, um, so that, you know, it's not a hundred thousand dollars next year.
In- interestingly enough, um, we've been seeing an uptick in, um. Behavior and again, it is, um, business, home business employees not parking where we designate for them. So we have seen a little uptick recently and then, you know, behavior changes a little bit too. So, um, yeah, I, I do agree.
Yeah, and I, and I think COVID adds to that, right? If you see empty lots in your business, of course, you're going to go closer. So I think once, you know, there, I think there's a longer list of the other side of this pandemic of things we'll relook at. So I just hope we kind of relook at this maybe.
Sure.
Absolutely.
Six months.
Thanks, Maureen. Paul, did you have your hand up?
Yes, just a real quick question. Thank you. Uh, to Steve. Steve, the animal control officer, was that a hirer of the council?
Think you always had to name them as a, uh, you, you had to officially name them or what have you. But I.
Right, so, but we did the hiring on the, on the animals. That was one of the council's positions, correct?
Correct, I believe so.
Is the parking, is the parking clerk also going to be Oz now or they, is that being switched over to you?
Uh, that, uh, animal control, I believe, is a statutory issue. Parking clerk is not.
So we, so we lost the animal and you're gaining the parking clerk.
I, I guess if you want to look at it that way.
Well, well, you know what I'm saying. So, so the authority, so our authority is, is no longer part of the position. That's what I'm trying to say.
For parking clerk?
Well, well, because we don't longer going to have an animal inspector, correct?
No, I, I think I mentioned that we will be entering into a, um.
That's a part-time.
We will enter into a mutual agreement, which this, this council will have to sign off on.
Okay, o- okay, I, I understand. Okay, so, okay, so the full-time position, no, but the part-time, yes. Okay, I get it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Seeing no further questions, I'll have, um, if I could have a motion and a second to approve the parking budget of twelve thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars.
So moved.
Moved by Paul.
Second.
Seconded by Jonathan for the discussion. No, um, roll call, vote, myself, yes. Julie?
Yes.
Ed?
Hi.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
And Peter?
Yes.
Excellent. All right. Our final budget is the Medicare budget.
Yes, last budget, Medicare. We are requesting an increase of thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars over last year. This budget is used to pay the town's portion of the Medicare tax. This is a salary-based tax for employees hired after nineteen eighty-six. This tax rate is one point four five percent. I'm estimating a two-point-seven million dollar increase to Medicare eligible salaries for fiscal twenty-two. Uh, this increase is based on both projected and anticipated salary increases. I, I priced this out, uh, with and without the schools. When I did it without the schools, I, I came up with a three-point-five percent increase. With the schools, I, I came up with a five percent increase. So that, that's what I increase this budget by, a total of a five percent increase. The total budget request is eight hundred and thirty-two thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars.
Thanks, Kevin. Um, Steve, do you need to make any?
No, I think I haven't at all. Yep.
All right. Maureen?
No, that was left before.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions, um, for Kevin about the Medicare budget? All right, seeing none, if I could have a motion and a second to approve Medicare budget of eight hundred and thirty-two thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars.
I'm moved.
Moved by Paul.
Second.
Seconded by Ed. Any other discussion? Seeing none. Roll call, vote, myself, yes. Julie?
Yes.
Ed?
Hi.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
And Peter?
Yes.
Excellent. Unanimous approval of that budget. All right, Kevin, looks like you're cut loose.
I'm all done. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
Um, moving to item number eight, surplus equipment. There is a, a request from, um, D P W Director Joe Conway for authorization to auction surplus equipment. The equipment is in your packet. It's always fun to read, I think. Um, some of the things we're getting rid of. Do I have, um, a second, uh, motion and a second, and then we can have discussion if any have questions?
So moved.
Moved by Ed?
Second.
Seconded by, um, Paul. Um, any discussion on the authorization to auction off the listed equipment? Jonathan?
Just a quick question, Mr. Mayo. Uh, do you have any senses to sort of the, the revenue that we, we generated from the last round of, of, of auctions?
I'll, um, I'll have Joe give, give me that until I don't.
Okay. Not urgent and.
I was going to be, yeah.
Yeah, not urgent and obviously doesn't affect, uh, I mean, sort of how I would view this, just more curiosity than anything.
I'll get that for you. I'm very interested in what the true wooden snow scoops bring myself.
I know. I agree. I love those little ones. Um, okay, seeing no further questions, um. Roll call, vote to approve the auctioning. Uh, myself, yes. Julie?
Yes.
Ed?
Hi.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
And Peter?
Yes.
Thank you. Unanimous vote on that. Moving to item number nine, licenses. Uh, there's a request for a one-day liquor license for the Hart Chorn House to sell beer for their second annual virtual event. On March thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. Do we have someone from the Hart Chorn House here to talk about it?
No.
No, okay. In the past, we've had that, so.
Yeah, Nancy was invited, but I guess she couldn't make it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, so I think this is a fun event. Um, benefits the Hart Chorn House on March thirteenth, um, to seven to nine P M. Um, folks can find out information on how to, um. Buy tickets by going to the Hart Chorn House website. Uh, W W W dot Hart Chorn House dot org. You can also Ven- find the Venmo address there. Um, so please feel free to join in. It's a lot of fun. Um, can I please have a motion and a second to approve the one-day liquor license?
So moved.
Moved by Ed?
Second.
Seconded by Jonathan. Um, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, vote to approve the liquor license, um, for March thirteenth, twenty twenty-one for the Hart Chorn House. Uh, myself, yes. Julie?
Yes.
Ed?
Hi.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
And Peter?
Yes.
Excellent. Approved. Um, B, under item nine, is a request from the, um, A B C C, the Alcohol Beverage, um. Control Commission to amend the change of manager application to add the number of hour per week. Um, that a manager intends to be in the licensed premises. Um, Steve, I had a question on this. Um, the proposed manage, the manager has proposed that the number of hours is sixty-five. What business is this for? I'm sorry, I'm forgetting.
This is, um, for, um, fangs.
Fangs, okay. Yeah, we, yeah, we saw them not too long ago.
Right, and, and she just didn't fill in this box until we kicked it back. So that's just kind of for fun.
No, absolutely. Um, any question, uh, we'll do questions after the, uh, motion and a second. Can I please have a motion and a second to, um, include the number of hours that the manager of fangs will be working on the form?
We'll move.
Moved by Paul?
Second.
Seconded by Jonathan. Any discussion? Seeing none, a roll call vote. Myself, yes. Julie?
Yes.
Ed?
Hi.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
And Peter?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you. Um, item number ten is a gift acceptance, a request from the library to accept and expend a gift. In the amount of twenty-two dollars and ninety-five cents from various donors with thanks. Can I please have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Moved by Paul?
Second.
Seconded by Jonathan. Um, roll call, vote, myself, yes. Julie?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
And Peter?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you. Um, item number eleven. We, um, have a vote on whether to approve the placement of a non-binding public opinion advisory question. Worded, do you support keeping the Wakefield logo with Native American imagery as Wakefield Memorial, Memorial High School logo? For the municipal election dated April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one. Um. We can do a motion and a second and then have any discussion on that.
So moved.
Moved by Ed? Seconded by Paul. Thank you. Um, is there any?
Can I just have a, a question on the motion?
Sure.
Um, I, I think there's, uh, in our agenda, it looks like the wording is slightly different than it is on the petition. Uh, the petition was, do you support keeping the Wakefield Warrior logo, not the Wakefield logo? Uh, I, I, I just want to make sure we clarify whatever it is that we have before we, we vote.
Absolutely. Um, Tom, can you leave, can you please read the language on the petition?
The petition does say warrior.
Okay, so that it's just missing. So the petition reads, do you support keeping the Wakefield Warrior logo with Native American imagery? As Wakefield Memorial, Memorial High School's logo?
Yes.
Correct?
Right.
So, so just to clarify, so we're, we're, the motion is on the language in the petition?
Yeah, that'd be my error. Yeah.
Thank you. Just wanted to make sure that was, that was clear.
No, thank you so much, Jonathan, for pointing that out. Um. Ed?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, with respect to this petition we've received from residents of the town. Um, I'll say that I appreciate that there is tremendous passion, um, that's been generated for many, um, in our town on this issue. And this is certainly a high school issue, but it is also a community issue. Uh, I think we have many stakeholders in addition to our students, including, uh, high school alums who may live in town, often, uh, multi-generational. And a lot of residents who are supportive of our Wakefield Athletics and the high school. And I think like many high schools and colleges, um, a school's logo ends up, um, inextricably being woven into the fabric of a community. And it can be a great source of pride for, for a community. And, um, I think we also can't forget that, uh, almost, uh, two-thirds of our tax dollars are dedicated to the school, uh, system. So, um, it, it's the biggest budget item for our entire town. And, and I think, you know, many in town have a vested interest, um, in, in our school's success. So I, I support placing this question on the ballot. Uh, this is a procedural vote. This is not a vote of, of, of any of our positions relative to, uh, what the logo should be. Uh, but we, we've had the requisite number of residents who have come before us with this petition to put it on. Um, I do not believe that this vote in any way diminishes the plans or the processes that the school committee, uh, may have, uh, put into place to address this issue. I do note that, um, this question, um, was rather split by the school committee. It was a fourth revote on the question of whether, uh, this, this question should go to the ballots. Um, yeah, and I think in fact that, um, putting on the ballot enhances, um, and, um, the process and provides more data. And, and input from a wider swath of our residents so that the school committee can hopefully, you know, make a very informed, thoughtful decision. And so while. so that the school committee can hopefully, you know, make a very informed, thoughtful decision. And so while I respect, while I respect that every issue may not be appropriate to put out to a town vote for input, I do think that there are times when there are people seeking to have their voices heard, and and I think it's very clear to all of us that this is one of those times, and and I think frankly, you know it when you see it or hear it, as the case may be. And so I think as leaders, it's it's up for, it's important for us to recognize when it's important for us to speak and when it's important for us to listen. And I think in this instance, the more listening we can be doing on this issue, the better off we'll we'll be as a community to move this 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 issue, which obviously is is significant amount of 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 public input and interest forward to a a successful conclusion, one way or the other. So with that, I would encourage my colleagues to to join me in voting to put this question on the petition. Thank you.
Jonathan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Actually, before I I make any comment, I I was hoping that we could maybe ask Mr. Mullen just to review the the state statute that governs advisory referenda like this. I I know just as I was reading the statute, I I think there are parts of it that are potentially confusing and and certainly appreciated, the the direct conversation that I had with Mr. Mullen. Just thought if it would, it might benefit sort of the group as a whole, just to make sure that we have clarity on, you know, how the state statute actually affected the vote we're taking today.
Sure. Chapter fifty three, section eighteen A, provides that upon a petition of ten residents of the town, the Board of Selectmen, or in our case, the Town Council, may, I don't read it as mandatory, but may place a purely advisory, public issue question on the municipal ballot. The statute goes on to say that if the Town Council fails to do so at least ninety days prior to the election, then the petitioners may force the town clerk to place it on the ballot by collecting signatures of ten percent of the registered voters of the town. So by your vote tonight, if you do vote in favor of the motion, you would spare the petitioners the very considerable effort of trying to reach that number of signatures in time to place the question on the ballot. And when I say in time, everything would have to be in place thirty five days before the election.
Thanks, Tom. Jonathan, did you have any further questions or comments?
You know, I I do just want to to comment on this a little bit, and and certainly I know I I've spoken to a a number of my my colleagues individually over the last week about this. You know, because quite frankly, I've been struggling to think about how the Town Council should handle the petition. You know, I'm someone who definitely puts a premium on us as elected officials emphasizing public participation. I think that's a really critical role that we have to play. But with that said, I'm I'm also deeply concerned about us as a town council getting involved in an issue that really fits squarely within the jurisdiction of the school committee. So the the reason I asked Mr. Mullen just to to talk through the statute a little bit is because I I think that it does inform this vote in a way that it actually is more than a procedural vote, as Counselor Dombrowski laid out. You know, the state statute governing municipal referendum questions gives the petitioners two avenues to get a non-binding on question on the ballot, as we just heard. They can force the the question to appear on the ballot by collecting ten percent of the signatures of Wakefield's registered voters, about eighteen hundred people. And I think in that case, our vote as a town council to put the referendum question on the ballot would be purely procedural, and and I certainly would vote to approve the referendum in that case without reservation. I don't think we'd have a choice to do otherwise. But I think it's important to recognize that this isn't the path that the petitioners took in this case. Instead, there were only a total of fifteen signatures gathered. So by gathering only fifteen signatures, the the petitioners that that are promoting this question are relying on the language in the statute that says a minimum of ten registered voters can request that the Town Council place a non-binding referendum on the municipal ballot. And it's clear in the statute that the Town Council is not required to approve the question. As Mr. Muller- Mullen mentioned, it's a it's a may, it's not a must. And so with that smaller threshold, again, we have discretion to decide whether this appears on the ballot or not. And this is where I think we're actually presented with a a pretty important conflict. If you go back to the school committee's meeting on February ninth, they engaged in a robust, respectful, and nuanced discussion about how to proceed with the Warrior logo discussion. And for a variety of reasons, they explicitly decided against requesting a townwide referendum. Instead, they voted to proceed with a process that was going to include an open public forum, which will be held on Thursday, and a panel discussion featuring the Baird family and other representatives from the Native American community. I think regardless of what any of us on this council think about that decision, it was their decision to make. Under our charter and under state law, the school committee has the sole executive authority over Wakefield Public Schools. And on the other hand, we, as the Town Council, have no legal authority over the Wakefield Public Schools or the decisions of the school committee. The school committee is a co-equal part of our town government. School committee members are elected independently, and they're not subordinate to the decisions that we make in any way. So what concerns me about the vote that we're taking today is that is that if we exercise the discretion that the state law gives us to approve the proposed referendum for the ballot, we'll be explicitly overturning a decision that the school committee, I believe, was well within their rights to make. I'm concerned that this sets a terrible precedent. I think it undermines the school committee's rightful authority over the Wakefield Public Schools, and I'm further concerned that it could compromise the ability of both of our boards to exercise our executive authority in the future. I don't think this is a decision to take lightly, and I would just ask that all of us consider that as we take our vote today and make sure that we're making, taking that vote, not just with this issue at hand in mind, but also with the precedent that we're sending for future discussions on similar questions like this. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Jonathan. Maureen?
Thank you, Chair. I, just a question for Tom, who has a little bit of institutional historic knowledge. I don't remember a non-binding referendum on our town ballot. Has this happened before in your in your in your time?
You mean since eighteen oh eight?
Exactly.
You know, before, before, you know, a decade ago, I I just don't, it's unusual to say.
I do not remember it ever happening.
Yeah, and and so it's rare, and and listening to Counselor Chines speak, and thank you for kind of mapping all that out, Jonathan, you know, the school committee took a vote on this, and just to get fifteen signatures and then to get a non-binding referendum on the townwide ballot, because the outcome of the really thoughtful, deliberate vote of an independent body was something that people felt they, you know, wanted more discussion on. I just, it seems as, it it seems like a bad precedent to set going forward. Steve, do you want to say something, Steve?
No, why?
That wasn't him.
Oh, it wasn't me.
I I thought your box just lit up.
No.
Um.
It did. I put my paper on it.
Um, so I think I I I worry about that, that, you know, it, the the school committee did have this debate, whether it should be a non-binding referendum on the town election, and they duly elected, they they decided no, they voted no, and then they voted six to one in a process going forward that, as Jonathan mentioned, starts Thursday. And then hopefully, you know, wraps up sometime soon. So I just, I I have questions about something that we've never done in town before with fifteen signatures, kind of undoing a decision that another board made. I I worry about other decisions kind of going to non-binding referendum. I also just want to point out, because I looked it up, I guess the voter turnout for our twenty twenty local election, one thousand people. We had five point five percent of the town voting. It is not townwide, all people coming and voicing their opinion. Five point five percent of the town voted in April, uh, last June, so our last local election. You know, I I think the school committee has set up a process where people can go to their public forums, can go to the panel, can reach out, as people have emailed Town Council, even though, you know, we don't have a vote, but I know school committee's been getting votes. People have been writing to the paper. There are lots of opportunities to weigh in. It is, and I think the last number I heard was twenty six other communities, the school committee has made this decision. It has not been a ref- a decision by referendum, non-binding referendum. So that's my my thinking. I just, you know, I I needed clarification that we hadn't really had non-binding referendums in town before, and also just wanted the numbers of five point five percent voted in our last local election, so it was not really a whole time-wide representation on an issue.
Thank you, Maureen. I want to also report that Peter agrees with Ed's comments, so I am relaying those to the body. Members of the council, any other comments? I, Ed?
So I just want to clarify, the idea of number of signatures, it is at fifteen. The, this petition was not before the school committee, when they voted four to three to not move forward with this. So I think we should also clarify that. In addition, in order for for residents to be able to have the warrant article put on to an article to put on to the warrants at a town meeting, I believe, Tom, that requires only ten signatures. Isn't that right?
For an annual or a for for the fall town meeting, that's right.
So this is actually fifty percent more than what would would be required for a warrant article, and a warrant article that would go before town meeting, if if approved by the town, would in fact not be non-binding, it indeed would be binding. So, you know, the notion that somehow fifteen people submitting signatures is is too limited a number, is not consistent with our past practice of of routinely, as a matter of perfunctory step, allowing through those those warrant articles that that are citizen or resident-based. So I I think we can't lose sight of that in in the broad scheme of this. Also, if I recall correctly, I don't know that there was much in the way of any contested races back in twenty twenty, notwithstanding the fact that we were in the middle of a pandemic at that time, so I don't know if that's necessarily the best parameter. I'd be curious to see some of the other vote turnouts, but even if we have, you know, fifteen hundred people voting and turning out, that's you know, fourteen hundred and ninety-three more than than just the school committee making a a a decision about just getting this question out there to provide some guidance. And and I do respect the school committee's work, and I do appreciate how much they spoke about the need to make sure there was public input, and I agree with that. And I think that this non-binding vote does just that, provides them with tremendous, tremendous amount of data as they make what I'm sure will be a very thoughtful conscientious decision. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Um, Maureen, did you want to say anything else? No, I'm Jonathan.
There were just, there were contested races. There were, Board of Health was, there were contested races. It was the middle of a pandemic. Usually, local elections don't get more than twelve to fifteen percent. We've kind of gone up to twenty, but just wanted to clarify that there were contested races.
Jonathan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I I just also, you know, with respect to Counselor Dombrowski, I I think the comparison to the warrant article question is really irrelevant in that case, because that's not the issue before us. The issue before us is whether we put the citizen petition for this referendum on the ballot, and our decision to do that is governed by state law, so regardless of whatever number is set in our charter for a warrant article, that's not the issue that's up here today. It's the question of do we exercise our discretion under the state statute to overrule a school committee decision that they were allowed to make or not? And and I think, again, you know, my my perspective is that's a decision that we should be taking very seriously, and that's a precedent that we should be really careful about, given the possibility that that could come back and potentially delay or gum up any decisions that we make as part of our executive authority over the town in the future.
I'm Julie.
Thank you. Um, it's interesting to hear both sides, and and the people who reached out to me, I said I wanted to listen to what the council, the legal side was, as well as my colleagues. Um, it is, it it's a difficult decision. I definitely understand the precedent issue. I think that we are elected, school committee or town council, to make difficult policy decisions, and this is one of those. No matter what happens today, the decision is squarely in, under the jurisdiction of the school committee, and they're going to make the decision however they're informed, whether it's through the the very great forums they're setting up or an election on this. But I do worry that somebody might not like our decision or another decision and and put it on the ballot in July, and we'll have to wait six months or, you know, a year for an election, and we'll be paralyzed. And and so I I do vote for this. I'm going to be very clear, it does not mean that this is the way I see the public pressuring the Town Council or any other elected body to make a decision. You know, having said that, Maureen's point on low turnout is definitely valid, and I think that yes, we all have a stake in this, and we're all proud, and I have children who are at volleyball practice right now, proud warriors. But really, this is a decision for the high schools and those who are under eighteen, so the vast majority are not going to be to the poll. And I know that they will have a way to have their voices, and I think the youth council bringing this forward to begin with was a very, very strong way to get the ball rolling. So, I mean, I'll be honest, I'm struggling with the decision, and I just wanted to put my ideas out there and and my thoughts about this as a president.
Thanks, Julie. I, you know, I I agree with what others have said, that I think this is substantively a a difficult decision. What's, you know, I am the only townie on the board. I was an athlete. I was the captain. I wore the logo. I'm a proud warrior. I held a lot of positions. Marched in the parade with my Warrior logo. But not all of us who do that are on one side. I want to make that very, very clear, and I thought we heard some thoughtful people at the school. The school committee last meeting. I hate this law. I think it's a terrible law. I think the fact that ten people can put something on put something on a ballot to vote on is not good governance. And as as that lovely woman who first spoke mentioned, I agree with her. If we held a vote right now that asked people whether black people could vote, it would fail in this country. I'm pretty confident in a lot of places it would. There's a reason why we don't put out votes. I'm not suggesting this, the substance of this is as great, but I don't buy the argument that that everything has to go to a town vote. I also think if it goes to the town vote, it's a nine, non-binding decision. School committee has full authority to make this this decision, and they do not have to wait for the vote to happen. They have taken a pulse. They have, they will hold forums. They've been emailed. We've all been emailed, starting with last summer. It certainly didn't start with the youth council, as some people have tried to suggest. That said, as a lawyer, I am gonna, I'm gonna vote to push this forward. I feel like this is procedural, because if we had a majority to vote no, people could still go out and get the vote, and we're making them do something that this law that I'm not a fan of suggests that they can do, and then we would have no choice. To me, as a as an attorney, it feels very procedural, what my role is. So I want to make it clear that a vote either way shouldn't suggest what this what we think about the substance of the ultimate law. So when perhaps those of us who vote to push it forward get emails calling us racist, which I know happened to some school committee members, I would suggest maybe you hold that thought, or you think about it. Or if some people suggest those that don't push it forward, that they're doing voter suppression, what a lazy not intellectual use of that phrase. This has nothing to do with voter suppression. Voter suppression is what's happening in Mississippi, Georgia, and Florida right now. It's not voter suppression. So both sides need to take a deep breath to appreciate that there are strong feelings on both sides, and if we can have some civility on this debate, I think that would be great for the town of Wakefield. So I am going to vote to push it forward, because I think you know, I really am, the the lawyer in me is suggesting that that's the right thing to do, and then without one And then without one iota suggesting that this, our vote should influence what the school committee's full authority is. Julie? Nothing? Okay, Jonathan?
Thank you. I, I just wanted to propose or get a sense of the group as to whether there would be any interest in maybe tabling this until our next meeting. So, you know, we have time to decide on this question before it actually needs to be approved to go for the ballot. And, and, you know, just given, I, I think the ambivalence of, of some of us on the, on the council and again, including some of us who've spoken on the issue. You know, this is one where I, I actually think there's some value in maybe taking some time to think through this. You know, to be honest with you, I'd also like to see if the feedback that we hear from the community in terms of the importance of this changes after the school committee's forum on Thursday, which I, I think is a tremendous opportunity, not only to offer feedback, but to offer feedback in a, in a, in a much more nuanced way than a simplistic question on the ballot would. And, and so, you know, again, I, I put the question out here to the council. Is this something where it makes sense for us to take some time and, and really consider it more fully? Knowing that, you know, there's no consequence in terms of delaying the vote until our, our meeting in two weeks relative to the ability of this question to appear on the ballot or not.
So let me take some of the other hands I see shooting up. I know Peter would suggest that we should take the vote and not wait. Julie? No, your hand's still up. Okay, John. Ed?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I disagree with, with Counselor Chimes's statement that it would not have a prejudicial effect on, on the people who are, who are looking to have this added to the ballot. In fact, I note that on their own petition, they say that any delay would be prejudicial to their rights. And, and they're correct because as, as we know, if we do not as a body agree to allow this request to go forward, then they have a, a requirement of getting at least 10% of, of registered voters to sign, to sign a petition. As Madam Chair has already indicated, that, that is significant. So I, I too have the lawyer coming, coming out of me right now saying that it, this was properly presented and filed with, with ample time to be, to be delivered at this meeting. And we as counselors sometimes need to make tough choices. This is why we're elected to make votes. And I think it's, it's very clear to us at this point that people have spoken out on both sides of this issue. This is an issue that, that has strong opinions on both sides. But ultimately, we need to be able to act so that this, this group of folks and anyone else who might be in support of putting this question on the ballot, know what their next steps are. And I think it's wholly unfair for us to hold that up for two weeks so that they in fact then find themselves in a time crunch. If they, you know, if after two weeks' time, this body determines that it doesn't want to actually go forward and allow this, this question to be put onto the ballot. And that's incredibly prejudicial for no reason at all. I mean, these are, these are our neighbors and they're asking, they've, they've come before us. They follow the rules. They've done what they're supposed to do. They presented something before us and we should make a decision. We're the leaders here. They elected us to make this decision. So let's make the decision. Vote, vote yay or vote nay, but make the decision so that they know what they can do next. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Sure. Paul, did you have your hands up?
Yes, Madam Chair. A question to either Steve or to Tom. I, i- if we move forward and this does get approved this evening, how soon or how much time does the petitioners have to withdraw their petition? Before, if they change their mind at some point, when would that deadline be to withdraw the petition?
Well, it's not their decision, of course, once you decide to put it on the ballot to take it off. That is, it would be your decision, not theirs. But as I said earlier, the magic date in all of these election matters is 35 days. Basically, nothing goes on the ballot that hasn't already been approved for the ballot 35 days in advance of the election.
So, so this body could then in essence approve it now and then 38 days out, we can say, never mind, we're pulling it down.
Well, let me be clear that the statute does not say anything about pulling something off the ballot once it's been approved. It only speaks of putting something on the ballot.
Okay, okay. So, so, so once we make the decision, then that, then it moves forward. Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you, Thomas. Madam Chair, when we talk about numbers of how many signatures on the petition, why aren't we discussing how many emails were sent to all the counselors? I, I believe that there were well over 40, at least 40 messages to us in the last two, three weeks asking us to put this on.
The automatically badly worded, computerized same email that we all got?
Yes.
That one?
Yes.
I mean, yeah, we, we got a bunch of emails, but I've also received emails on the other side. Yeah.
Which I had maybe one or two on the other side. But that's, that's not the point. There are numbers out there, whether or not it's only 15 on the sign. I think they, they met the requirement. I think, I'd like to move the vote. I, I make a motion that this board makes a vote.
Is there a second for Paul's? Ed seconded the motion to move the vote. Discussion on moving the vote? Jonathan?
No, I just, you know, I, I mean, if there's no support on the council to taking some time to think about it, that's fine. We can certainly vote today. I'm not concerned about that. You know, for me, again, the conflict between the, the statute itself and the, the decision that we would be making, which is not a procedural decision. Again, it is up to the discretion of this council to overrule a school committee vote is something that really does trouble me. If we do have to vote today, I'll be voting no. But I, I do wish this was something that we could spend some more time thinking through because quite frankly, I think it is larger than the question that the petition itself has raised.
Thank you, Jonathan. Maureen?
And I, I just wanted to add to the three of you and Ed and say, as an attorney, the May sticks out to me. And I do, I do feel that, you know, the school committee did deliberate going to a non-binding referendum. It was a vote that they took. They spent hours, their meetings last longer than our meetings. And I felt like they are our elected leaders in town to make this decision. And I have a hard time undoing their thoughtfulness in that decision that they made just last week.
Thank you, Maureen. Any further discussion on moving the vote? So, Tom, remind me of my Robert's rules. Do we take a motion now, a second to vote on the, putting it on the petition?
I've never seen the Board of Selectmen or the Town Council have a vote to move the question, but presumably the same rules would apply, which is it takes a two-thirds vote, or in the case of your council, then five votes to decide to cut off debate.
Okay. And, and as chair, I, I don't want to cut off debate. I'll just, chair's prerogative. I don't want to stop the debate, but if we're all kind of know where we're heading, we don't need to prolong it either. Ed?
Could we, I think we could also just withdraw Counselor Doc's motion, right? And just, because we have a motion that's already on the table in normal course.
Sure.
That might be a little easier instead of doing two votes.
Paul, would that be okay?
Madam Chair, I, I, I will draw my motion to move the question.
Great, thank you, Paul.
You're welcome.
All right, so we have the motion and we have a second. I see no further discussion. So this vote is the vote to place the language of the petition on the town ballot of April 27. Roll call vote, myself, yes. Julie?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Jonathan?
No.
Maureen?
No.
Paul?
Yes.
And Peter?
Yes.
Okay. So on a vote of five to two, the question shall be placed on the April 27 ballot. Thank you. Okay, any announcements by members of the council?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I, I'm not sure if I, if it goes here or if it goes to the next line.
It doesn't matter.
I, I'd like a, 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 a probably about five minutes to make a comment. So I'm not sure if you want to do it now or wait till everybody else does it.
You spoke first, Paul. If you want to do it now, you can do it now.
I, I, I just need people to bear with me for a few minutes. I, I had all the intentions in the world of moving forward for the April warrant on putting an article on the warrant that would address the Butler Ave property. I've asked Town Council to give me some advice. I've talked to Steve on the matter. I was going to present it to the board, but now I'm finding out that it will not make it through the planning board in time to reach the closing of the warrant. So I'm, I'm stuck in my pursuit of trying to do something good for that property. So I'm asking through you, Madam Chair, that we could probably set aside some time at our next meeting that I can make a presentation as to what I want to get the feel of, of my fellow counselors and Steve as to what their thoughts on moving forward on the potential uses of that property and to hear my suggestions. So, I mean, that's where I'm at right now. And I'm trying to move forward with this i- i- in the proper manner. I have an idea that I feel strongly about, but I can't move forward unless I have the support of the council. Okay, because ultimately it's up to the council to determine what is going to happen to that property.
Sure. So you, you just want some time at the next meeting to, an agenda item to talk about this?
That's correct. And to, to at least give me a direction on, should I continue thinking about it? Or do you people have other ideas? Because right now I really don't know what that thought is. So if, if possible.
Sure. I think that sounds like something we can do. Absolutely, Paul.
I greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
And that was way less than five minutes. Thank you.
Well, well, again, I, I'm, I don't want to take up too much of your time tonight. If you're going to give me time on the eighth, that'd be great.
Sounds good. Thanks, Paul. Jonathan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And, and thank you, Counselor Dinocho, actually, for bringing up the Butler Ave property. I'm looking forward to hearing your thoughts on that next week. And, you know, I, I, I think it's such a unique opportunity for us as a town, given that it's a, a property that we actually own where we can, you know, really determine what goes there. So I, I, I'm glad, I'm glad we've taken the initiative to, to get that process started. Kind of in that vein of thinking of the future, I, just a couple of announcements. I, I first wanted to again, put in the plug that the, the first meeting for Wakefield Vision 2030 is next Thursday at 7:00 PM on Zoom. We're going to be focusing on, on four topics in this first meeting. And it really is one where the meeting is going to be set up, not so that the town can present to residents, but that we can hear from residents about their vision for the future. So certainly hope that folks will participate in that. The four topics that we have slated include housing and residential areas, mobility and getting around, parks and leisure. And I am totally forgetting about the fourth one right now. I will put that in my, my notes from, from today's meeting, just so folks have a chance to participate. If folks aren't able to attend, we are going to be following up, first of all, by having a, an open survey that anyone will be able to access for, for several weeks after that first meeting that will cover those same topics that will, will be addressing during, during that meeting. And the session itself will also be available on, on WCAT afterwards. So thank you again to our friends at CAT for all the great work they do there. Again, hope as many people as possible can participate. This process is only going to work if we hear from residents and only going to work if residents not only show up, but also tell us what's on their mind. And so I hope we can get a great crowd for that. Also did want to put in a plug, the next night, next Friday, the Wakefield Educational Foundation's new family trivia night is scheduled for, for that Friday, the fifth. It's a virtual event. It's a little more family friendly maybe than the, the team spelling bees been in the past. So encourage folks to participate in that. And then finally, just wanted to mention parents should have received an email from the Wakefield Public Schools asking for their input on a, a budget survey to help guide their priorities for budget planning for fiscal 2022. And if people have seen that and haven't had a chance to respond, just a reminder to, to please do so. So thank you, Madam Chair.
I'm Jonathan. I had a lovely email from Girl Scouts who wanted to participate in the vision meeting, especially the mobility and getting around. And I told them that they can do so.
Absolutely.
Just sign on. Okay.
Absolutely. No, it, we, we actually, you know, I think this is something where we want to hear from as broadly diverse a, a cohort of residents as possible. And so I'm thrilled to hear that there are young people that are interested in participating and, and would love to see them, see them at the event, at least virtually, and, and hear their thoughts as well.
Great, thanks, Jonathan. I'm Ed.
Madam Chair, just a reminder to all of our, our four-legged residents in town that this is the month to make sure that your, your dog licenses are up to date with our, our town clerk. So be sure to do that if you haven't already. A pretty cool, like little charm medallion is provided. Also, I, I guess on, along the lines of vision, in vision, downtown revitalization, we, we have a meeting coming up this Wednesday at 7:00 PM, also via Zoom. Information is online and also in the item as well on that. So hopefully you'll be able to take part in that, get some updates on, on where design is and, and the path moving forward. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thanks, Ed. I'm Julie.
Thank you. And Steve, I mean, I think we also next meeting have to put on the Green Communities warrant on stretch code. So muted, but I think so, so, and just something else for next meeting. Other than that, I'm looking forward to the envision seminar. The Safe Streets Working Group is meeting tomorrow. And they've given a ton of input into the, the VHB and the design. So we're very excited to see what's going to come out of that. On Thursday, competing with the, the mascot event, the WMGLD is holding a webinar on their Go Connect program, which is a new energy efficiency program. So those who are conflicted for that night, I'm sure it's going to be recorded and there'll be some interesting information there. Other than that, I think a number of us got inquiries about the timing on the high school. I spoke with Steve about that. So I think it'd be great just to get an update. And I think at this point, people just want to know, are we talking seven years out or two years out? People are trying to make decisions. And so I suggested to Steve and, you know, maybe once some of this COVID passes, but we have so many construction projects going on in town. It'd be great, maybe just to have a little update on the website for people to keep up with those as well. So I answered the best I could. I also happen to be married to a permanent building committee member, so I have a little more insight. But Steve, I mean, I would love to, I mean, are we talking two, five, seven years? Like, what do you think the timing is?
Well, I think that there are some big milestones coming. You know, the, the town was invited into the feasibility study program on December 11th of 2019. We had certain milestones to hit. And even though COVID hit, we, we met them. And you remember in this November, Town Meeting actually voted to enter into the feasibility studies stage and, and, you know, appropriated money. So right now, this Wednesday, the request for services for the owner's project manager should be in the central register. And the permanent building committee, working with the school building committee, will pick that entity at the May meeting of the, this May. And then things will start to move forward. The OPM will then help the committee and really guide through them and pick the designer. And then the community will really have to discuss the different designs and different options. So that design period could be up to a year. So, so we're at summer of '21, summer of '22, looking at designs. You know, so i- is it possible that Um, you know, so i- i- is it possible that there could be going out to bid um in summer of twenty-three? It's possible.
Okay.
So there's a few, it's, it's, it's a long process and I guess.
I know, I'm just trying to, I think we all just need to manage expectations and, and people are anxious to know when they give input as well. So, it's coming. Thanks.
Um, Maureen?
Um, just as important as the new high school, which is very important, are also the pickleball courts that um I, I confirmed with Steve and I've got numerous inquiries about this, but are set for spring twenty twenty-one groundbreaking. And so to build up the buildings and the high school are very important on this website that we will have one day, Steve. But also the smaller projects such as the pickleball. I think people would love a dashboard. I know we talked to Joe Conway and Bill about this, but I think, you know, as we, uh, there's so much great work happening as COVID has been going on. And I'd love to just kind of highlight that, you know, uh, on our website or at these meetings. But um, and, and, you know, Steve and I have a pickleball date set for spring of twenty twenty-one. Um, we had one competition, uh, we had one round that did not go well, but we will try again. Um, but I, I, just seconding what Julie said, I think people care about the big projects, but also some of those little capital projects that are so important to people and and make our town welcoming and inviting and a great place to live. Um, just to get updates on those would be really helpful.
Thanks, Maureen. Um, okay.
Did we ask who won the pickleball game between Steve and Maureen?
It, uh, it, it was a tie. We both had zero.
Totally a tie. I think I was wearing heels, Steve was wearing a suit and dress shoes. And we did pretty well compared to some of the seasoned veterans on, on the floor there.
Um, Steve, do you have any parting comments?
Um, uh, yes, uh, uh, two things, Madam Chair. Number one is that um, the council has uh seen a lot of budgets and thank you for your support on that. And just give a grand kind of scheme of things to date. To date, the budgets have been brought in at a level of um two point five eight percent um over last year. I know it's not level funded, but all in, that's not too, too bad. And I think the department heads did a really good job. Um, um, because uh, I know they really listen to us. So I'm very um, I'm very happy to them. They worked hard and I get that they don't uh, you know, they, they always want to do more and I get that, but they do get the fiscal reality, so I do appreciate what they do. Um, one, one other comment, Madam Chair. I was um, kind of, I always, I look for my name in the paper. I'm not always pleased when it's in there, but uh, there was a lovely letter written um by Tony Ganella about Zach Boyajis, a, a person who did help hundreds of kids. And um, the unfortunate part of that, that letter in my part was a few notables who came up through Wakefield basketball were our town administrator, Stephen Mayo, and former Senator Scott Brown. Let me tell you this, there was a lot of bench room between Scott Brown and me. Scott Brown was on the court, I was down the end of the bench, like thirteenth or fourteenth player. Kind of being in the same, the, the townies will know, being in the same category as Scott Brown in a basketball sense was interesting to me. I guess I'm much better than I thought I was. Or I'm remembered better, but um.
Wasn't it downtown, downtown Scotty Brown?
Yeah.
He could hit the threes before we had threes?
Right, right. He, he didn't have many assists, let's put it that way.
Exactly.
But wonderful to be mentioned with uh Zach Boyajis anyway.
Yeah. Who is my uncle, I'll plug that again, so. Um, does anyone have any comments with regard to matters not anticipated for the agenda? Can't be, okay. So with that, um, I need a motion to adjourn and a second, please.
I'm moved.
Moved by Ed?
Second.
Seconded by Julie. Uh, roll call vote, myself, yes. Jonathan?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Ed?
I.
And Julie?
Yes.
Great. This meeting is adjourned. Our next meeting is March, Monday, March eighth, um, at seven P M. Um, thank you all, thank all the counselors for um your discussion and have a great week. Take care.
Night everyone.